Okay, we will start this meeting. Please stand for the flag salute. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unified, universal, universal.
Welcome to our last meeting for 2023. In closed session, we took action. So, Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes, thank you, President Ibarra. So in closed session, the board made a motion and seconded to adopt the notice of recommendation of dismissal and statement of charges against classified employee 33305. And the recommendation was unanimously adopted. Also in closed session, a motion was made and seconded to adopt the notice of recommendation of dismissal and statement of charges against classified employee 33776. And that motion carried unanimously as well. And then there were a number of two administrative appointments in closed session as well. So we are thrilled to announce these here in the open session. So in closed session, a motion was made by Stacy Nicola and seconded by Chris Rahaga that the board approve the certificated management reclassification of Andrea Eckenrod to interim dean at River Heights Intermediate School. The effective date is to be determined, but that motion carried 5-0. So Andrea, I know you're here this evening. Congratulations.
Thank you. I got teacher voice so I can yell. So thank you to the board, thank you to the executive cabinet. I'm super excited to continue my journey in Coronorco, moving from one Eastville school on over to another. So I am super excited to work with Dr. Barry and Dr. Missat. And I like to say my husband is here supporting me. My kid is home and they've already been studying for finals. So they could be with us tonight, but I wanted to thank everybody on SuperCard.
Congratulations. And also in closed session, a motion was made by Bill Pollak and seconded by Mary Ibarra that the board approve the classified management employment of Matthew Fraley to manager social worker in instructional support. The effective date is to be determined. The motion carried 5-0 also. And Matthew comes to us from Riverside Unified. We stole him.
All right.
Yay.
Test, test, testing. There you go. Better luck on me. So, thank you, Executive Board, Cabinet, Board. I'm just really excited to be here. This is my home district. My daughter, who is a Temescal Valley elementary student, and then my wife, Dylan, supported me tonight. I've been over at Riverside for seven years, being a SAP counselor, it's a student assistance program, working with families, working with students individually through a wide variety of mental health services that they might need. So I'm just really excited to be a part of my home district and to serve our family, our community, and our students.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
So that is the report of closed session. Adoption of the minutes, November 7, 2023, regular board meeting. I need a motion and a second to adopt the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Let's vote. Okay, November 14, joint meeting with RCCD. I need a motion and a second. Move. Let's vote. Okay, we will move on to organization of the board. Dr. Buenrostro, please call for nominations for president.
Thank you, Madam President. So at this time, I'm gonna open it up to call for nominations for president for the for the board for the 2024 calendar year.
I would like to nominate Mr. Bill Pollak.
Thank you, Mr. Rahaga. I appreciate the nomination. I do want to just make a little brief comment, however. You know, I love this board and I love my colleagues. I really do. And I love the fact that we have an equal voice, no matter what our title or our designation is. Having been president before in the past, I do understand that there's a little bit more responsibility and time commitments. And I think you guys know I'm very busy with my other job in the daytime as a physician assistant. When I perform, when I come to school events and can't see my patients, I feel guilty. And conversely, when I, just the opposite, you know, I feel guilty. So I think for the best decision for the board, I would respectfully decline this. But thank you again for the nomination.
I'd like to nominate Chris Rahaga for president.
I need a second.
I'll second Chris.
Let's vote. No, he didn't say anything.
Thank you. Thank you for the nomination. And although this is my first year onto the board, I know that there are plenty of folks up here that I can ask any questions of that have a little bit more experience than me. So I humbly accept the nomination.
Let's vote. Okay. Chris, you take over the meeting.
All right. Next up, we have 4B, which will be nomination for vice president. Do I have a, any nominations for vice president?
I'm gonna nominate Mary Ibarra for vice president.
We have a nomination. Are there any additional nominations?
Second.
Is there a second for Ms. Ibarra?
Second, I second that. Second.
So we'll go for a vote, then? Do we have discussion on it? Yeah, we can have discussion.
I don't know. Obviously, we're all new to this whole reorganization deal. But I would also like to be the vice president, so I'm just gonna put that out there. And so I don't know. I guess we do one at a time, but I would be interested in that leadership position. Just letting my board know.
So Evita, just for clarification purposes, would the board first vote for the Mary?
That's correct. The current nomination on the floor.
Can I ask you something? Can we have two VP? VP one, VP two? I think that will... Well, it can be done, right? There's not, there's no impossibility here. We can do whatever we want.
No, I don't think we do a vice president one and two. We have the...
If I can just add, I just wanted to add that my point in speaking up, which typically I... In this situation, it's just very odd, but I'm just gonna go ahead and put it out there because that's what I do. We're coming up for election cycle next year. And Chris and I don't have, we are not up for reelection. Ms. Ibarra, Dr. Lawless are both up for reelection. And Mr. Pollak is not running for reelection. So I just think that as a board, it would behoove us to allow those that are campaigning to not be also serving in leadership positions. That's just my opinion.
Any other comments?
Yes. I know, I've been on the board 10 years, and that has never stopped us. But whatever.
Let's call the vote.
Any other discussion, Mr. Pollak? No?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just for clarification, we will start voting with the latest motion first and work away backwards. So Stacy nominated herself. We will need a second. We'll start with that, and then we'll go to Mary.
Okay.
Isn't Mary nominated?
I just want to clarify, Evita, is that the correct process? Okay.
That's correct. So should Stacy's motion get a second? Then the latest motion would receive the first action. I know it's a little difficult.
I will second Stacy's motion. Nomination. So we'll take a vote on that motion, our nomination first.
Could we have a...
Nomination of Stacy as vice president.
So both of you are running and no one wants to back down a little bit? Or you really want us to really put us on the spot and divide us?
I will, I will decline.
Thank you, Mary. That's very courageous of you. All right.
So we'll vote. All right, we'll move on to the... Oh, congratulations, yeah.
Congratulations.
We will move on to the position of clerk. Do we have any nominations for the position of clerk?
I will nominate Mary Ibarra.
Yeah. Second that.
Any discussion? Or any other nominations? No? Okay. We'll take the vote, then? Congratulations. All right, we are going to move on to item 4D, recognition of outgoing board president. Mrs. Ibarra, Dr. Buenrostro.
Mrs. Ibarra, if you can join me up in the front?
Thank you, Bill. On behalf of the Board of Education and the CNUSD community, I would like to extend my sincere gratitude to board member Mary Ellen Ibarra for her excellent service as board president. Her unwavering commitment, leadership, and dedication has significantly contributed to the success and progress of our school district. Her leadership has helped us navigate challenges and achieve milestones that have positively impacted our entire community. On behalf of the entire board and our school community, I express heartfelt thanks, Mary, for your, thank you for your outstanding tenure as board president. And we have some gifts for you. Dr. Simon? Let's give a round of applause.
All right, Dr. Buenrostro, why don't you stay up there? Because we are going to recognize Ms. Ibarra for being the 2023 Board Member of the Year. California Board Member of the Year.
So this is the first ever recognition for CNUSD with this category. So about 10 days ago or so, in San Francisco, we were thrilled to share the news that our school, that what our school community received, which is that our board member, Mary Ellen Ibarra, was recognized as a school board member of the year by the California School Board Association. That's well over, we have over, well over 1,200 districts. So you're looking at about over, over six, easily over 6,000, close to 7,000 board members across the state. So this prestigious state recognition honors Mary's unwavering commitment and outstanding contributions to public education in her role as board member for CNUSD. Please join me in congratulating her, as well as, thank Mary. We want to thank you for all your many, many years of service to the CNUSD community. You make us proud, and you're making a noticeable impact in our state. So with that, so thank you so much and congratulations. And we have a very special gift for you. It's in your favorite color. We also have, from Assembly, Sabrina Cervantes' office, Rachel Gonzaga, who's gonna present you as well.
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of Assemblymember Sabrina Cervantes, it is our absolute pleasure to present this certificate in recognition of the 2023 California School Board Association Board Member of the Year. On behalf of the State Assembly, we recognize your exceptional leadership for over a decade, we'll say for decades. Your unparalleled work to advance the education of our future leaders has left a long-lasting impact, not only with Corona Norco Unified, but throughout the state of California. Your trailblazing efforts and unwavering commitment will empower generations to come. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Mary. Thank you for all of your hard work. All right, we're gonna be moving on to item 5B, the School Smarts Academy, Park Ridge Elementary School Parents. Dr. Buenrostro.
Thank you, President Rahaga. At this time, I'd like to ask, let's see, where is she at? Mrs. Amonesa, to come up here. And we've had the privilege to have our, the School Smarts Program for a couple of years now. And we're here to recognize some fabulous parents from Park Ridge Elementary. I'll let you speak.
Good evening, School Board trustees. My name is Anna Curdie Meza, and I'm here tonight with my fellow board members from Corona Norco Council PT. Corona Norco Council PTA. Joining us from Parkridge Elementary, we also have Angie Munoz, Andrea Rangel, Cecilia Verdusco, and Maya Orozco. More than ever, building strong connections between parents and their children's school is vital to student success. Yet for parents, there is often no clear roadmap showing them how that can be achieved. The School Smarts Parent Academy was developed by California State PTA to engage, educate, and empower parents to be involved in their children's education. It is based on comprehensive research conducted with parents and families across the state, exploring what they need to know to successfully navigate the public education system. Last year, Corona Norco Council PTA and Corona Norco Unified School District partnered to offer the School Smarts Academy to parents in our school district. And tonight, we're going to recognize the third group of parents to complete the program at Parkridge Elementary. The School Smarts Academy is a seven-week program, and during our time together, we focused on the parent's role as their child's first teacher and the importance of parent involvement. We focused on preparing children for a lifetime of learning by identifying different learning styles. We learned the structure of California's public school system, including local funding, how schools are governed, and how decisions are made. We also practiced effective communication, so we could learn to advocate without becoming adversarial. Our participants had the opportunity to express their interest in having dual-language immersion offered at Parkridge Elementary, and they were able to vocalize their concerns about the safety of all students on campus. Before we recognize our School Smarts graduates, I want to thank Dr. Ben Rostrough for allowing Council PTA to continue facilitating this program. Dr. Pollak, I want to thank, Dr. Pollak, I'm sorry. Mr. Pollak, I want to thank you for being at our class last week as a speaker. We appreciated that. I would also like to extend a huge thank you to Angie Munoz and Andrea Rangel for making it possible to offer this program to our Spanish-speaking parents at Parkridge. And would they join me right now to present these certificates? Our first parent couldn't be here tonight. She's actually a parent from Caesar Chavez Academy, and she's attending her child's concert tonight. Parent involvement? And her name, I'm sorry, her name is Jenna Oberton. We also have from Parkridge Elementary, Perla Navarro. Martha Cruz. Irma Cuevas. Martha Fuentes. Maria Gonzalez. Anna Magretti. And Jessica Lopez Tapia. And these are our School Smart graduates. Their families are here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Can we, can we get them all up here? Can we get their families up here?
Peter, do we want to do a picture? We're going to do a picture with the whole group.
With the whole? Yeah, let's do it.
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Hold on, we're digging in.
Make sure everyone's head's short.
All right, everyone, ready? One, two, and again, one, two.
Why, every, everybody's getting back to their seat. I just wanted to make a quick comment. I really enjoyed my night up at School Smarts, and I want to thank the Parkridge parents and the staff and the PTA. This was such, and Anna, this is such a great program. I loved it. I enjoyed it. I wanted to stay there longer and just talk and converse, and the questions that you guys asked were amazing, and I love the fact, how much you advocated for the students, your students and the school. So thank you for allowing me to be there.
All right, up next, CSBA Golden Bell Award, Auburndale Intermediate School. Dr. Simon.
Thank you. Corona Norco is pleased to honor the Auburndale Intermediate School community, led by Veronica Rodriguez, Joanne Farrar Genau, and Stephen Loria, for their recognition as the 2023 Golden Bell winner. The California School Board Association's Golden Bell Award promotes excellence in education by recognizing outstanding programs and practices of schools throughout California. Auburndale Intermediate School was awarded the Golden Bell for its laser-like focus on English learners and multiliteracy. Auburndale in Action focuses on reclassifying English learners at the middle school level so they do not become long-term English learners in high school. Internal structures and supports are used for language development while continuing to provide a rigorous educational experience for all students. Auburndale has created a staff-wide culture of accountability for English learners, including rich professional development, increased parent involvement, and a focus of changing students' mindset toward their achievement in the area of reclassification. Congratulations, Auburndale Intermediate School. And I want to present you on behalf of the board and Dr. B, a certificate in recognition for your outstanding effort.
Thank you so much, Board and Executive Cabinet and Cabinet. We appreciate this recognition. It was a great time to be able to be with all of our board up in San Francisco. We appreciate that everybody was able to join us, and it's not really, I know we're the ones standing up here, but it's the work of our teachers, the students themselves, and our parents coming together to do the best for their kids. So Dr. Farrar could not be with us this evening. I know she would have loved to be here as well, but could not join us this evening. But we'll continue to do the work. We had Dr. Lawless there just yesterday, kind of seeing a little bit of what we have going on. So we invite you all, if you haven't, I know Mary's been there and a few of you have been there as well, on different occasions. Take some time, come on over, visit our school. We invite our parents in our community, because I know we all watch these board meetings, right? If you don't know what Auburndale is, come and visit, take a look and see what we have going on, because we have great things for your kids. Intermediate school is a quick two years, a quick two years. And the minute we figure out what a student needs, they've gone on to high school. So we're doing our best to make sure we're on it as fast as we can, meeting the needs of our kids, not just our English learners, but all of our kids. So thank you again, we appreciate it.
Okay, ready? One, two, and again, one, two.
All right, moving right along, presentations to the board. Measure GG Citizens Oversight Committee Annual Report. Mrs. Guatemala.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I would like to bring up our Citizen Oversight Committee for Measure GG. We have our members here, and I'll let them introduce themselves. I just want to say thank you so much for your time and dedication in being on this committee. We have some veteran members here as well that have been here from the start of the bond process. So we thank you very much, and they're going to be reporting on the prior year, and that's an annual requirement that we need to do for the GG.
Good evening, Board President, Superintendent and Board Members. My name is Amanda Wade. I'm currently the Chair of the Measure GG Committee. Jamie Merchant.
Dawn Kindred.
Amber Pallant.
We do have some additional members that are not here this evening, and as well as some incoming members, as you'll see on the board agenda this evening. All right, you should have the report there in front of you. So these are on the cover here, some recent projects for the Measure GG Committee, and our members here will kind of give you an overview of those projects during this report. Just a brief overview of the history for Measure GG for the community. In 2014, 2015, the Board of Education did pass Resolution Number 40, which committed bond funds to upgrade classrooms, modern, modernized classrooms, libraries, science labs, technology systems, so that our school sites were 21st century-ready. These funds are used in conjunction with state funds to complete projects within Corona, Norco, and Eastville. You'll see the percentage there for the funds allocated. Corona receives 63% of the bond funds, Norco receives 14% of the bond funds, and Eastville receives 23% of the bond funds. You'll see the breakdown there at the bottom within that pie chart. Proceeds of the sale of the bond can be used to do new construction as well as rehabilitate and reconstruct existing school facilities. We did introduce ourselves, but you'll see where we are from or what city we are representing, as well as the category within which we fall and the end of our terms here. Jamie is outgoing as of this year, and this is her last meeting in front of the board with us, so she'll give a little goodbye speech, I think, at the end. All right, this is a summary of the funds that have been allocated, as well as used and expended. Corona and the unincorporated area has a remaining allocation of 102 million approximately. Eastville has used 77 million and has no remaining allocation. Norco has a remaining of 4 million approximately. And then the information technology sector has a remaining 24 million. You can see the combined totals there at the bottom. Additionally, we do want to point out that state school facility funding program is being used to supplement these projects, and within the last two fiscal years, the district has received state grants in the amount of 68 million.
I first just want to say, it's been a pleasure to serve on the GG Committee for the last seven years. We've come such a long way, and I can truly walk away and say that I would proudly say that we have spent the money appropriately and for what the best needs are for all of our different communities, and that any future bonds that I would endorse and say that they, that they are needed. I am excited to speak about Corona High. I brought my, I wore my swag today, being a panther. This project was a $1 million project that was GG-funded, and it is the new ASB room and library, and the space is truly amazing. It offers flexible seating for the students to be able to collaborate. There's, there's still books in it, which is really good. We haven't gone to fully all, everything computer. And then they have a separate, like a separate, like office space or conference room almost that the, the teachers can use and have smaller groups and tutoring. Hearing the feedback from the students, they absolutely love it. It almost feels like you're in like a Starbucks environment when you're in there. The, the seats are very comfortable and mixed use, you can sit all different kinds of ways. And then next door to it, the ASB, huge area for them to make all of their posters and have their spirit wear, and it's, it's just an amazing, it's come such a long way since I attended there. So it was really exciting to see. The next project that is currently underway, it's Rainy Intermediate Gym, and this is another much-needed project, and I'm really super excited for Rainy. I was also a knight, so it's exciting to see that they're going to be getting a state-of-the-art gym that they, that they desperately need. The design plans are possibly, have they, they've probably already been submitted, they're, they're about to be submitted to DSA, and the construction is scheduled to start in the summer of, this coming summer of '24, and should last about 14 to 16 months. And I know that it was very collaborative in the design process with the school site administration and with John and Dahlia. So they really did get a lot of input from what the school site's needs are. And then they also took suggestions and tweaks from other projects that we've done that now looking at it, oh, we could have probably done that a little different. So it's nice that they're out there and they're listening and doing some really awesome things with the money. I just would also like to note that this isn't specifically GG-related, but it does all fold in. I'm happy to see that there is going to be an increase in the routine repair and maintenance budget, that is, that's going to be your next presentation somebody's going to be giving you. Because now that we're spending all this money on all these different facilities and projects, we really need to make sure as a district to put a plan in place to keep them maintained, and we shouldn't have to go with another 30 years of not touching a building to get to where we've gotten today. So I think it's really important if, if, as a board, if you could try to find a way to actually truly make a maintenance plan, so, because some of our facilities have really gotten rundown over the years. So now that we're investing all this money in them, we need to keep investing in them and, and keep them up. So thank you so much for everything. It's been a pleasure, and I'm going to pass it on to Dawn.
Jamie, I got to say thank you for your service, your passion on the GG Oversight Committee. You've, you've really been a major asset to moving everything forward and keeping us together, and thank you for all you've done. Appreciate it. So the next one is Auburndale Gym, like Rainy. It's a $8 million, rounded off, $8 million project. It's 10,000 square feet of gymnasium plus two new CTE classrooms. So these are going to be real assets to both Rainy and Auburndale. It's good to see that happen. The next one is Centennial High School Aquatic Center, and the project includes the installation of a 50-meter pool, new pool facilities and bleachers, and this is beginning pretty much now, in probably the first part of '24, and that is a $25 million project, all GG funds. Following that is Victus Bowers Site Improvement, and the project includes the addition of two, of a two-classroom permanent modular building. two, of a two-classroom permanent modular building to the campus to provide more space for specialized therapy services that the students need desperately and also upgrading the current parking so it's up to code. And that's a million seven rounded off. And then Norco Highland Site Improvements. The scope of the project includes providing seven new TK and K classrooms as well as other minor improvements and that's a $7.4 million project and that's getting underway the first part of '24. And that concludes mine. Ready? Okay.
This is my third year presenting the information technology slide, so here we go. Today, a total of $60 million was first allocated to the Measure GG funds for technology upgrades. A total to date of $37.5 million has been currently allocated for the technology and the installations across the school district. Let's see, to date, 2,400 projectors, 400 whiteboards and 8,300 data drops have been installed. Also note, elementary schools have received 250 interactive whiteboards and the next step is to refresh technology across the district, seven years or older. So that's our information technology slide. And then we're going to go to the fun stuff, the community outreach. So CNUSD notifies the community of the progress of the Measure GG projects by using all kinds of tools such as social media, banners, videos, websites, meeting presentations such as these, newsletters and store, and the stories in the newsletters. So this goes over the different areas. What I like to highlight are the videos. They just released a video of the Corona High School presentation that we do have for you guys to watch right now if you want. Are we going to do the presentation, John? Okay, we can watch it. This is great. We've got student feedback, staff feedback. It's wonderful.
I like the new library. I haven't, I haven't been in it before, but it's the first time I've been in it. It's awesome.
Like especially with the seating and everything like that and the layout of it, it just feels very much like it brings us all together and we can all talk and we're more comfortable than in a classroom setting.
I feel like it's a much better space to learn. It's a much better environment. Feel safer. Feels like a coffee shop.
Just come in here, like do our work and sing out. Man, if you like that, I can turn my, my stuff.
I like the manga section.
It's like good to like work with my friends with our projects that are going on because we're working on our final year.
So far, I like it. We've been in here a couple times. I think it's a good productive environment, like I like the furniture and all that. I think it's just a good place to get your work done.
There is another area back here that the students can work in and they don't need official permission anymore. They can just go in there and get all their paper, all their paint, wash their brushes and it's just so much more efficient than I used to be. As you can see, there's so much more room. Just feels like a new, like a new place.
able to view those on social media as well as in the newsletters. We also want to recommend to the community that they do keep abreast of all of the information for Measure GG on the district's website. There is a section dedicated to Measure GG. And finally, the super, or the Citizens Oversight Committee did receive an annual report on February 27th, 2023. That was a financial audit report for the 2021, 2022 school year. In reviewing that, on behalf of the Measure GG Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, I'm pleased to inform you that the district is in compliance with Article 13A, Section 1B3 of the California Constitution and the current projects are authorized under Measure GG. Thank you very much, Board and Superintendent and Cabinet.
Thank you. I do want to just say thank you to each and every one of you for volunteering your time and being a part of the Measure GG Committee. I know we all have busy lives and for you to volunteer the time to make sure that the district is spending the money how it should be appropriately, I really appreciate it. Thank you, Jamie, for your time on the Board. And if there's any other comments from my colleagues. Thank you, guys. Moving on to Item 6B, the 2023-24 First Interim Financial Report. Mrs. Godamawa.
Thank you, President Rahaga. All right, so we want to present to you the 2023-24 First Interim Report. I'm just going to start out with a little bit overview on our first slide. We added a new slide just to give the Board some information. I know some of you have already heard it at the California School Board Association Conference. There are a little bit of updates, so we just wanted to give you kind of a status of where we're at at the state level. So the Legislative Analyst Office just released a report actually showing that the state is facing a $68 billion deficit for '24-'25. It's driven by the severe decline in revenues for the, largely because of the tax filing, the delayed tax filing. And also, I know as the state, they're looking into what can be done to close that deficit. They do have some options, they do have some reserves and there could be some one-time spending that could be cut for next year and also just programs or reducing funding in various areas. The COLA that they're looking at for next year, we've heard things from as low as half a percent to about one and a half percent. The latest report says 1%. In the revenue projections that we have that Melissa will present, we are showing the last COLA that we were given, which is 3.94%. So that's what we were using in our assumptions, but this is just giving you an idea of where the state is at, at this point. We won't know the official number until the January budget comes out and then we'll update that for you for the second interim. And then the COLA for the out-year '25-'26, they're estimating 2.7, so that's also a little bit lower than what we have projected. And as you know, there's the softening in community. We do have the decline of enrollment across the state. We decline as well as a district, but we're still percentage-wise, we're not as low as where the state levels are in their enrollment decline. And then just to kind of give you how that relates to the district, I want to assure the Board that, you know, we have budgeted for all of our negotiated obligations. So those are all included in the budget. We don't see an issue with meeting those requirements, especially like for class size reduction that's been recently negotiated. That's fully included in our LCAP and so we don't foresee an issue going into next year. Also, we do have healthy reserves. Some of them are committed for some projects and then others are just assigned reserves that can also help us during any further cuts that come from the state. So for now, we're just going to hang tight, but we wanted to make sure you had a good overview at the state level. And then Melissa will take us into kind of what that looks like for our district.
So for our first interim budget assumptions, our COLA remains the same at adopted budget at 8.22%. That is what is provided by the state. Our unduplicated pupil percentage remains at 65%. That's the same as adopted budget. And as we progress through the year and we get our updated figures, we will update that unduplicated pupil percentage for our second interim report. In adopted, we projected our ADA to be a decline of 500. So again, same as the duplica, unduplicated pupil percentage as we progress through the year and we have our certified figures, we'll update that for our second interim. For our federal, state and local revenues, we've updated those with our one-time entitlements and during adopted budget, we have some estimates and now that we've received the actual allocations, those have been updated. And we've also updated our '22-'23 carryover, so we closed out our '22-'23 year and we've updated the carryover budgets in the current year. Here we have our projected revenues and it's comparing adopted budget to first interim budget. You'll see an increase of 30.2 million there. That's largely from carryovers of revenue from the prior year. We have some of our final COVID dollars included. And then in state revenue, we do have our Proposition 28. That's the ongoing arts grant budgeted there for 8.4 million. Next, we have our projected expenditures. And as we bring in those carryover budgets, we, for revenue, we also bring them in for our expenditures. And that Proposition 28 budget is, we do have placeholders in the budget currently for that, those fundings. And as part of AB 1200, in addition to the current year, we also project out for the next two out-years. Our first out-year is the '24-'25 year. And as Dahlia mentioned, the COLA remains the same as what we adopted at adopted budget at 3.94%. But when the governor puts out the budget with the updated COLA in January, we will update this at second interim. And that's same for unduplicated pupil percentage for 65% and our projected ADA decline of 500, along with the adjustments of our revenues. And with that COLA of 3.94%, we have an increase in LCFF. And we've also accounted for step and column advancement for our employees as well as increased costs for utilities, contracted services, transportation. And then again, as our expenditures increase, our routine repair maintenance contribution increases as well. It's 3% of our expenditures. The next year we have is the '25-'26 here. And again, the COLA is the same at the 3.29%. That's the same as adopted budget with the unduplicated pupil percentage, 65%. And again, a projected ADA decline of 500 as well, adjustment of our revenues. And then we also have same step and column advancement and increase in our contracted utilities, transportation, and again, our routine repair maintenance contribution. Next, we have our multi-year projections. You'll see for '23-'24, we have our adopted budget, our first interim budget, and then our two out-years, '24-'25 and '25-'26. In the middle of the row, it's a lighter blue row, we show our ending fund balance across all years is positive. And then the rows underneath that are the components that make up that fund balance. And you'll see along the bottom is our required 2% reserve for economic uncertainties and we are meeting that requirement in all three years. And on the next screen, I'll go over the committed funds. As part of ed code, we, our unassigned and our assigned fund balances cannot exceed 10% of our expenditures and so we must commit the funds that are above that. And you'll see the total here of 123.9 million. And you'll see that later in the agenda, there's a resolution for the three buckets. So we have instructional materials, routine maintenance and physical infrastructure, and then also the technology. In terms of instructional materials, we know that we have textbook needs for adopted, adoptions when we go out in future years. Our lottery allocation's about 3 to 4 million a year and so this will help support our adoptions in the out-years. Under maintenance and physical infrastructure, we have several of the projects here. Security Phase One, the project has already started and so we have some of that, those funds budgeted. The remaining 1.9 million is here committed in the fund balance and it'll remain there until we have the need to bring it up into the budget. We have a placeholder of 3 million for the Phase Two. Next, we have Envision 2033 for 44.9 million and those are some of the projects at Corona and Norco Highs. Next, we have the classroom furniture refresh and similar to the Phase One of security, we have brought some of the budget up into the budget because we, the project is in progress and the remaining is a 3.2 million there. Next, we have the general fund portion of the gymnasiums at Rainy and Auburndale for 10 million each. And then we have our maintenance summer projects for 14 million that mostly consists of roofing projects throughout the district. And we have our fleet vehicle needs. We have several outdated vehicles that the ongoing repairs are costing significantly and so we have 900,000 there. And then we also have 8 million for the district office expansion and so we're investigating the gravel lot across the street, how we can help support expansion of the district. And then for technology, we have a placeholder for infrastructure as our infrastructure ages and ages out of the life expectancy, we have that placeholder of 9 million there. Next, we have our other funds, adult education, we have our cafeteria fund, we have our, the next four are facilities funds, including the Measure GG, and then we also have our self-insurance fund. And this is the approved beginning fund balance, the revenues, the expenditures, and then you'll see the projected ending fund balance across all of the funds are positive. And with that, we would recommend the Board approve a positive certification for our '22, '23, '24 first interim budget. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. Let me have.
Mine is a general question. To what extent does this budget reflect any anticipation of salary negotiation?
It includes all of the current.
Includes the current. And future? Is that negotiated as we go along or we cannot project that?
For future, so what we have budgeted is the COLA right now of 3.94%. That's just the COLA on the revenue. The negotiations process has to take place to figure out what happens because as I mentioned earlier, right now, the state is looking at the COLA to be more like 1%. So that's usually the starting point and then we work in the, with the associations on negotiations. So we won't have that factored in just yet, but the increase in revenue is built in.
And the two associations have access to the same information with regards to school finance?
They do. We also meet with them and go over the presentations as well and they also receive that information also and we're always available for questions. But we go into it into more depth in the spring when we start negotiations.
Okay, thank you.
When are the furniture, the new furniture arriving at the schools?
We are expecting it to be in the, closer to the summer of '24 for the start, for the first couple of schools.
So it's not going to be this school year? I mean, it's not going to be like in January, February? I thought we had said that it was going to start coming in right after Christmas break.
We have, we are, we're rocking the school sites now. We already know which schools are included. There are a couple of them that are going to hit in this current school year and then the large high schools, Corona and Norco High will take place in the summer because those are really big changes across the campus. So by summer, we'll probably be done maybe about with six schools or so and then we'll continue for another maybe eight to 10 months and we'll be done with the project fully for Phase One, for all the schools that are over 50 years old.
So the elementary schools are not going to get new furniture in?
There are a couple that are.
We're going to wait till?
I think it's more like April, May timeframe. There are a couple that are going to be by then because there's a lead time for purchasing their furniture as well.
Thank you, Ms. Sabara, for that question. We're very excited about it. We are actually inventorying three elementary schools tomorrow and the two high schools on Friday. They will have their install in April. The high schools, as Dahlia mentioned, they'll be at the end of May and early June, so it will be this school year for five sites. And then starting at the end of August, we'll just roll right through the rest of the phase and they'll be done by the following May.
Thank you for the presentation. I just wanted to clarify, you said that our Prop 28 is 8.4 million?
Yes.
All right. And when are we going to start seeing those, those funds and start allocating those funds to our arts and music programs?
Our new VAPA coordinator is doing a great job. She's starting the the process with the committee, with our educational partners to get that feedback. And we're expecting a plan later in the spring.
Okay, maybe we can get an update in, I don't know, a couple of months. We could have some type of update on how those funds are going to be allocated. Thank you.
Ms. Nicola, did you have any questions?
No.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Moving on, we will be going to item six C, education-based athletics. Mr. Gunsalves.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm excited to invite our coordinator in human resources for athletics, Mr. Bill Gunn, to the podium to present an update. Really, this this project of education-based athletics really comes from leadership from the board. I want to thank the board for giving us this charge to really develop our athletic programs with education first and in mind. So the presentation tonight will.
We're working a few tactical difficulties getting the the presentation up and running.
The the presentation, I will will really help focus and on the training that's involved. You'll see that highlighted.
Mr. Gunsalves?
Yes.
Mr. President. While we have a moment, can can you please share with the room what Mr. Gunn just received this week?
Yes, that's a, that's a great, great segue while we're getting the technology up. So as you know, Mr. Gunn has been here in the district for a number of years, has really led our, the development of our athletic programs. As a coordinator now for the district, he's done great work, but his his influence and really expertise has been shared beyond the district for a number of years. So he was awarded the honor of entering the Hall of Fame. I believe it's a, it's a CIF. Tell me the the organization, that the Hall of Fame that you were inducted to this year or this.
The CDA, ADA, it's essentially the Inland Empire Athletic Directors Hall of Fame.
Congratulations.
Is that a longevity award?
Exactly. It just means you're closer to retirement, essentially, is really. They ran out of options. I was there, you know, the name was part of it.
Congratulations.
There we go. Thank you. Are are we ready? Mr. Scher. Ten seconds?
We do have a hard copy. We do have a hard copy if you want to start.
Yeah, we can. Right. Okay, so we've been doing a lot of work in education-based athletics over the last year. I I do, you do have a hard copy there. You'll notice that this presentation is in line with the strategic plan. There we go, in Corona Norco. So we we tried to base it on that and what we can and can't do here. And so we've got our mission statement and our guiding principles. These you've all seen before. And then our strategic goals for the last year, we really had five of them. Specifically, coaching, education, hiring compliance, sports medicine, facility partnerships, and parent partnerships. These are all areas that the board has indicated they would like us to work towards in education-based athletics. And also, our community partners have indicated this was a need for our district. And so we took the first one, which was essentially coaches' education. And we've taken the opportunity to update the coach's handbook. I I believe you've all been given a copy of that as well, the twenty twenty three version of that. We went through it line by line and updated it with board policies that have changed over the last decade or so. And so every coach in this district has a copy of that coach's handbook, the expectations that we have here in Corona Norco. We also had an objective of hosting our fall, winter, and spring coaches' symposiums. And the highlights on that are, we did have seven hundred, over seven hundred coaches attend. I'm pleased to announce that, as of the information I have right now, one hundred percent of our high school coaches have attended our coaching symposiums this year. So that was really terrific for us. We're excited about that. We're going to continue to offer those trainings as we go, supporting fifty five hundred athletes in our district from all of our comprehensive high schools, including JFK, Pollard, and AOI. Those kids are also included under our multi-school agreements, right? So some of the topics, you can see them there. We went through everything that that we thought was important that the board has shared with us, but also our community has shared with us. We've talked about various avenues for our coaches, the performance indicators that we're looking for moving forward. We're going to change the format a little bit. One of the things that we we've discovered in this process, getting our feedback from the coaches that are in attendance, which we've had almost three hundred responses on the feedback, which is terrific for us, good, bad, and otherwise. They want to hear a lot from our own coaches, from the current coaches that we have hired, not necessarily just the athletic administrators. And so we're looking to make that impact. I told the board many years ago when we started rolling this out that we need to go where the coaches are instead of having them come to us. And so we're attempting to do that, highlighting up there bullet number five. We are going to be partnering with Diane Cranley, who is a nationally renowned prevention consultant on best practices and professional expectations for coaches. That's a huge topic for us, a point of emphasis, and I wanted you to know that that is going to be happening in the future. And our intent is to utilize her expertise to impact our coaches. Temporary dates moving forward for next year. We'll do our fall, winter, and spring on those dates. Moving forward for the coach's education. And I've already spoken about that, that coach's handbook there on our next slide. Every coach has access to this. Beyond that, we're talking about hiring compliance. You probably know or have heard from some employees and coaches that human resources has become a little stricter. In fact, I'll just say it a lot stricter on our hiring compliance. And this is an example of all the steps that anyone who wants to coach in Corona Norco at our high school level has to follow all of those steps, take all those classes, some of which are mandated by the state of California, some of which are mandated by the CIA Southern Section, some of which are just flat out mandated by Corona Norco Unified. But this is the process that they go through. We're tracking these coaches. The school sites have access to this information. So they're able to work with the coach before they get out on the field, making sure they're cleared. We've done this as well at the elementary and the intermediate sites. Not quite as extensive, but there's still a process for those folks to go through to get cleared when we do our intermediate sports and our elementary sports as well. And we are monitoring that. It's consistently in human resources here. The sports medicine piece, we're still collecting data. I know the board had an interest in finding out a ratio of athletes per athletic trainer on our sites. Unfortunately, there, it looks like there has been never been a study done on that particular idea. I've talked to the University of Wisconsin, who actually is the leader in the country on sports medicine at the collegiate level. There are lots of studies out there for the collegiate level, but no one has done a study yet to say for every seven hundred high school athletes, you should have one athletic trainer. So we're still working on that piece. I am communicating with our Murrieta schools, our Riverside schools, our Orange County schools as to what their processes are. And to be quite honest with you, they're similar to ours from a public high school perspective. Private schools are a little different story. They have a little bit more leeway into hiring a few more trainers than what we are able to do at this moment. So that is still yet to become, yet to come. And we're working with the sport clinic on implementing those trainings. You all saw the video that we did at, on the sudden cardiac arrest at Centennial High School earlier this year. We're going to continue to do those trainings with our athletic trainers at other sites as well. They may not be that specific training, but it will be sports medicine related that can apply to all of our sites. So we're still working on the data, and then we're still working on getting those trainings done there. For our our friends and facilities, the strategic partnership here on working with our facilities department on our campuses. We know there are some issues about access and who has access and who's using our facilities. When are they using our facilities? And there are some variances between site to site. So we're actually meeting on Thursday morning as athletic administrators. We're going over the expectations. John Von Driska, I think he's still in the room somewhere, is going to be there with us. They're going to, the the school sites are going to hear a consistent message from both of us about the expectations of who has keys? Who's accessing your facilities? When are they doing this? We're gonna, we are implementing some new procedures there that if you rent our facilities, you must have that permit in your hand every time you come to the facility and things of that nature. So we know it's an issue, we're addressing it, and we're doing that very quickly here as we move forward. And then the last piece that we have here are our parent partnerships. We want to continue to support our site-specific athletic parent symposiums. Roosevelt has one currently that they do with their incoming eighth graders. Norco does a fall, winter, and spring based on their sports. And we want to see this go district-wide with our other schools that have yet to engage in this type of activity with our parents. We want to bring our parents in and partner with them and and, you know, bring them a, be a part of the athletic environment in a positive way. And so our parents do a great job by and large. We're super lucky to have them, but we, and we want to continue that work moving forward. An overview of of the strategic goals and where we are as far as the processes and some we've completed, some are in progress, and some we're still gathering data on moving forward. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions? Dr. Lawless? Mrs. Sabara?
Thank you.
Yes, I would like to see if we rent the facility to someone like the gym, to somebody that's having a tournament or whatever, that they don't start making keys and lending them out to other people.
Okay.
Because we ran into this problem last year.
Yes.
And they were charging and just got out of hand.
We will, we will get.
So it needs to be tightened up because we don't want to be liable for somebody. We, we rented it out to so-and-so club, and then their friends came in and then started charging for people to come in. And then how do we find out on Facebook? Because everything's true on Facebook, you know? So.
Yes, ma'am.
We need to really tighten up on that. Thank you.
We'll get after that.
Mr. Pollak?
Thank you, thank you for the presentation. You know, I've said it years ago, you and our athletic directors, all our athletic directors, Aaron's here, and everyone else have taken our education-based athletics to another level. And it's very, very exciting to see. We we don't only have exceptional teams, but we have great leaders directing them. So so thank you for that. A couple of things that that struck me. What, would it be advantageous to add our intermediate coaches to the coaches' symposium? I don't think there are a lot, but I think that it's a good start, and it could maybe give them some additional information other than just, you know, having to do the concussion safety and heat safety and those those things. I don't know what your opinion is I'd like to get.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that I have an opinion of that. I think there's value in that, something we can certainly look into and talk to, talk about. One of the things that, you know, we need to look at is what's best for the organization. And it might be best for the organization to bring in our intermediate coaches. You know, we're talking less than a hundred of them. But at the end of the day, that may be of value, and so let's, let's take a look at that, and we'll explore that and have conversations regarding that.
Thank you. And then the second thing was the, the, kind of the last objective regarding the parent interaction and and teaming up. You know, if you've been to any athletic events in our district, not not solely in our district, you see it everywhere. I don't think it's nearly as bad in our district. But the behavior of some parents is is not great. And so I would like to see maybe the next level of education-based athletics is is to expand upon that and see what we can. It's a challenge for you guys.
Yeah.
I I guess is what I'm asking. And I don't know if it can be done, but I just foresee it getting worse and worse. You know, the official, the, you know, the officials, we're losing officials right and left. And if we really want our our student athletes to be able to have the full experience, we need our parents on board. So I don't, you know, whatever you guys can do, but I would see, I would like that to be the next challenge, I guess.
Wholeheartedly agree with that, and I, and we do have great parents. We really do. The the issues that we see from time to time are almost exclusively, but with guests, not necessarily our parents directly. They are with guests that that come into our facilities, and so we need to do a better job, and we're going, we're going to work towards that. Thank you.
Ms. Nicola?
Thank you so much for the presentation. I just want two things. One, I really appreciate the the seasonal meetings. I went to the Norco High Spring Sports Meeting, and I thought it was great. There was a lot of parents there, and and I loved the messaging there, and I think that it was, it was great. And I agree that it would be wonderful for other schools to adopt that. And then the other thing I just wanted to mention is I wanted to take this opportunity while you're there to thank you so much for the girls' flag football season. I feel like it was just, not only has it gotten a lot of attention even outside the district from folks beyond that are interested in it, but as you know, my daughter's a senior, and it has really, it's really adjusted the trajectory of what she wants to do moving forward. She's looking into flag football for college. She's getting ready to play in a game, I guess, in January. There's going to be a game that she's invited to play in. And I just know from her and friends and a lot of them, they're just, it's really been a really exciting addition to the schools. And the girls really love it. It's brought so many, we just had the banquet, the Norco High's Flag Football Banquet. And the coach talked a little bit about the backgrounds of all of the girls, and they're all so different. They come from different walks. And, you know, my daughter's never played a sport. She's was in the choir. So it's just was really an awesome opportunity. I loved seeing all of the people there, the support. And so I just want to thank you so much for bringing that to our district, and I look forward to seeing how we continue to to grow it next year.
Yeah, you're welcome. And and from the information I've gathered after this season, not only are our teams going to have a varsity team next year, it's quite likely most of our schools, if not all of them, will have a JV team as well. Flag, girls' flag football is a thing. It is happening, and we're supporting that in Corona Norco, and the kids love it. And that's really what it should be about, right? So we're, we're super excited for that.
All right, I just, I want to thank you for your presentation. And then I did have a couple of, or one question specifically. I know you said that you were looking at data from other districts regarding the athletic trainers. Is there any, I know there's, or I'm sure, there's some sort of Athletic Trainers Association or something?
Yeah, National Athletic Trainers Association. I've reached out to them, I've spoken with them directly. They did not have any data to share from, with me either about a ratio for, at our high school levels.
Okay.
So that did come back, both in writing and on the phone.
Okay, thank you for that. I would just like to, I know I've asked it a couple of times, but I I think it's important to add an additional athletic trainers just because I don't want a tragedy to happen on the field and not have a trainer available. So I'll mention it again, but thank you, thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome.
Chris, could I, could I piggyback on that comment? Just what, so California also has an association, CATA, California Athletic Trainers Association. And unfortunately, California is the only, the only state that doesn't require licensure. And so we're actually, in my opinion, from the. And so we're actually, in my opinion, from the sports medicine standpoint, kind of behind the eight ball. So I, I feel what Corona Norco is doing is, is excellent. But Cali, I mean, we've traveled to games, you know, covering Centennial, I've been covering Centennial. And there were schools, I remember going to an LA Unified School District game and they didn't have anybody. And then another school had a dentist. No offense to den- dentists, but you know, when you're dealing with a cardiac emergency, sometimes it's, it's problematic. So I really feel where we're at is good, but I, I echo what Chris says on getting a second one. And I know that you agree too.
And, and certainly we can look at that and look at the numbers. They're all available online and we post those every year. And, and we can collectively decide what's best for our kids and what's best for Corona Norco. Happy to do that.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We will move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Rahaga. I would like to highlight the, my attendance at the National Blue Ribbon Schools, which was held on November 15th through 17th in Washington DC. Once again, congratulations to JFK and Eastvale staffs for, and our students for this tremendous award. Also, our Classified Employees of the Year Recognition Program took place during that time. In fact, I missed it. And, but I do want to recognize five employees that were chosen for special recognition. For their strong leadership qualities, their clear vision and commitment to service, exceptional skills and knowledge. Commitment to high standards, professionalism, and significant impact and influence. So this congratulations goes out to niece, excuse me, to Tina Maness from Child Nutrition Services. Veronica Medina from Clerical Support. Lisa Enfield from Instructional Support. By the way, Lisa Enfield is, is our representative to the county. So good luck, Lisa. You're, you're going to represent us really well. Also Dennis Cervantes from Maintenance and Peter Camacho, our Peter Camacho from Communications. So congratulations. Let's give him a round of applause. Also, Mr. Gunn just left, but congratulations as well to Mr. Gunn for being selected for the Hall of Fame. Here in the Inland Empire and our, also a congratulations to all of our coaches, athletic directors, and of course, our students. Our sports or our athletics programs are second to none in public education across the country. So kudos to, to all the wonderful work that's taking place. Lastly, second to the last, I want to also recognize our boss. The, the bands of Santiago High School that will once again be representing CNUSD at the Rose Parade on January 1st. This will be the third appearance in the parade for the Santiago High School boss. And lastly, wishing everyone happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year. So with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you. We are going to move into a public hearing, which is going to be continued to January's meeting. At the request of the landover, landowner, the hearings in connection with Community Facilities District Number 21-1 of the Corona Norco Unified School District are continued to January 16th, 2024. The board will consider adopting 2023-24 Resolution Number 57 regarding the necessity to continue the public hearing on the intention to alter Community Facilities District Number 21-1 of the Corona Norco Unified School District. And amend 2021-22 Resolution Number 69 in order to increase the maximum aggregate amount of bonded indebtedness later in the meeting as part of the consent calendar. We will move on to Student Board Members Report. Maya is not here today, but she gave us a copy of her report. Is somebody gonna read that out or you want me? Yeah. I will go ahead and read it out. At Centennial from November 8th through the 17th, they did a canned food drive. November 30th, they had a club officers' meeting and a second meeting of our new, of their new club accountability system. November 29th through December 1st, there was a theater play. A, a Romeo and Juliet play that they, that they had there. On December 6th, they sold hot chocolate and donuts as fundraiser in the morning before school. On the 8th, they did Life Skills Talent Show. The 11th, they had a PJ Day to kick off finals week. They did an adopt a family donation drive. Counseling team did workshops for seniors. ASB evaluations of every ASB Commissioner Officer from Eboard and of Eboard from everyone. Upcoming on January 25th, they have a winner assembly where they are going to be participating in a Hunger Games theme. January date to be determined, the, during the school year, ASB will be holding an interest meeting. February at a date to be, to be determined, ASB will be having their election week. And another date in February to be determined, Flower Shop Junior Class Valentine's Day fundraiser. At Santiago, on November 5th, they had the Fall Awards Assembly hosted by Renaissance. On the 16th, they participated in the canned food drive hosted by Unity. The 17th, they had a Friendsgiving. They also did a blood drive hosted by Unity. On the 27th through the 1st, Winter Rally Spirit Week. On the 1st, Winter Rally Star Wars Theme. And on the 3rd, on November 3rd, December 6th, December 8th, freshman events hosted by Link Crew. Upcoming, they have on December 14th, a Silent Night Basketball Game. And on January 12th, Winter Fest, which is open to the community. January at a date to be determined, they have the ASB Interest Meeting. And then in February, the ASB Election Week and a date to be determined. All right. She does a much better job at giving her report than I do. We miss her tonight, but she, I know she's studying for finals. We will move on to Board Members Report. Dr. Lawless?
All right. Good evening, everyone. Let me see here. We all went to CSBA, California School Board Association. And I attended the, the two general session. Very interesting one on artificial intelligence. Scary, scary stuff. But you know, you gotta, I guess this is the current and the future world we are in. So we have to make sure that we're able to to understand how it works and put it to use in a very productive, ethical way. I also attended a session on competitive advantage. And the speaker talked about academic knowledge, technical competencies and professional skills. What I learned from him, it really very applicable to all of us is, do you see me? Do you hear me? Do I matter? Questions that we should be, I think our students are asking us, do you see me? Do you hear me? Do I matter? That goes to our special ed kids, to our English language learners. To our employees as well, you know, do you hear me? Do you see me? Do I matter? I think that will give us a sense of belonging in our, in our own school district. We keep that in mind. Attended Mary's session. Congratulations. That was an excellent panel conversation. But I asked this question at the end of the presentation, the why, the why question. They talk about lots of good data, gaps of strategies. But it's, at the end, it's out to the public. So I asked this question. To what extent do we really understand the why of all of this? So we can provide the real remedy. We have to get into the why. Okay. Then another session I attended was on the, on policy, policy development. And I learned that there are mandatory, legally mandatory mandated policies that we have to really look at. And CSBA has a, has a list of those. And I think I pass it on to our administrators to determine what those legally mandated policies are. Well, just let me interview. I'm very curious about the current books that are happening. So I, I picked up a book on inclusion. It's on The Way to Inclusion. How Leaders Create Schools Where Every Student Belongs. An excellent, an excellent book. I read it and it pertains well to the policy on inclusion that we're trying to develop. I also picked up the Brown Act, the 2023, because it has a lot of implications on what we do. Because I know at the last meeting, we kind of talked about, is it, are we violating the Brown Act or not? So I, I, you know, I read it and then I'm ready to, for a conversation at the next, at the agenda item that pertains to that. I went to, I visited Obum Dale because I want to really know. Because it was really recognized at CSBA. I said, how do you do it? What are the data? What, what did we do? And I was really very excited to be there. Veronica and Mrs., Mr. Luera, the dean, took me around with Dr. Capes, of course, my, my visiting partner all the time. Giving me all the input. And while the focus of that recognition is English language learners. I saw more in that school. It's beyond. Because they have a program for special ed for severely handicapped students, a music performing arts program. Haven't, I haven't seen anything like that all over. That really pay attention to the needs of all kids, including the S, the SH, the severely handicapped. That's an amazing, an amazing teacher that I talked to. They have a lot of good teachers. I, I had an honor to, to meet Mr., our Teacher of the Year, right? Scott Yakubowski, teacher of math. And as a fanatic math teacher, he's wearing a teacher with mathematics kind of symbols. And, and I said, can I take a picture with you? I'm really honored to meet a real mathematics person with, with that, with that passion and intensity. So I did. And surprised, I also saw the son of my former students. Mrs. Robert, no, no, not now. It used to be Carol Shriver and Russ Shriver. They have a child I know from, it's a little boy and a very tall guy. And I saw in the door, Mr. Shriver. So again, I was very excited to, to see a teacher that I know from, from, when they were young and that I taught to of the parents. What else? Oh, my question to Dr. Ben Roscoe, are we still doing the principal's evaluation? We do. Okay. And if we do, that's fantastic. And I, I hope that as a culture of evaluation, we need to have a, a report on that or a appraisal. Because we, we don't do that anymore. Maybe even it, it's confidential, right? We can do it as, as a board on our own. Is it confidential? Yeah. But it's a good information for us, for us to know because if we have a process, then we need to know the result of what the process is all about. I, I know that a long time ago, that was, that was created. I've been a board for a very long time. So I kind of really pushed for that. I can claim that from the very beginning. And it was working. And I think it makes our, it's not punitive. It's really just making sure that, you know, we're, we're doing, we're connecting. To now we have goals. We have all kinds of, of standards that we had, have to meet. So I hope that we can revive that in us, so we have more information about it. That's about it for me. Thank you.
Mrs. Ibarra?
Um, we had a joint meeting with RCCD, which was a really good meeting. We hadn't had one in a long time. And the best thing was that we had Dr. Esok here so we can ask him questions point blank. Like, can we get together and build the school in South Corona? Like a JFK over there. Because everybody was asking, you know, we were giving our wish list. So I said, it's my turn to give, you know, ask. And I asked him and he's looking at me going, yes, we have it in the plan. So hopefully soon we will start talking about that. Also, I was part of the Superintendent Panel Advisory Council that we have every two months, every other month. It, it's, it's good information given to the, the parents and they do ask a lot of questions. So that's good. We, we keep them up to date. I also attended the Classified Employee of the Year Ceremony, which was great. I attended the D-LAC meeting. That meeting is getting bigger and bigger and bigger. I think pretty soon we're gonna have to move it to a high school gym or something because we have a lot of parents there. And we had a huge group. I think there was about, what, 11 people from the Mandarin program there? And, and they, they love coming to it. They, they like, they have their own interpreter there. And they have a Spanish interpreter and an English interpreter and it's all going on. Really great. CSBA, I was able to present at two sessions, which was great. One of them, what Jose said, it was with two superintendents from up north. So we were trying to get our information. How we do things, how we made it through COVID. The next presentation was about the big money. And that's when we get the good news or the bad news. I don't know which one it was. But you know, we were told exactly what's coming down from the state. And one of our past state school superintendents, Jack O'Connell, was there with us. And yeah, our ask to him was more money, more money. And he says, I'm not in the spot anymore, but he knows people. So also I was just appointed to CSBA 2024 Legislative Committee. So I will be giving some updates as soon as I start going to those meetings. Thank you.
Mr. Pollak?
Thank you, Mr. Rahaga. Congratulations again too. Busy month, very exciting month. I'll try and condense some of the activities, but want to highlight a few. Many of us were able to go to Orange Grove High to their Thanksgiving feast and talking about a fun time. That was just an incredible time. What's, what's going on there? I, I really liked the cohesiveness of the, the, the staff and the admin and the students. We got some pretty cool designed sweatshirts that a student made, just tremendous artwork. So that was just, just a good time. So I'm thankful for that. And then Dr. Ben Roscoe and I went to a community event, Just Serve Awards Night. And one of our teachers who has founded the Inclusive Sports Foundation, Matt Lance received an honor there. And it was really neat to see. He's put this program together. First started in the district for our special ed students throughout the district. And they come to a high school and student, high, high school athletes are mentors to these students. And, and it's just a wonderful, wonderful event. And he's actually picked this up now and he's going to multiple colleges. Utah State, UCLA, there, there's a few other colleges and other school districts are getting involved. And so it was nice to, to honor Matt and his passion with inclusion in, in sports. I was honored to be at the School Smarts Event. I was glad that the parents were here because they really had some great questions and, and insight. So it was good to see that. Along with Stacy and Chris, I was able to participate in the City of Norco Parade. I don't know if Robin is still here. She was here earlier. But I wanted to thank her for getting our float together, full of lights. And it was just a great community event. It's fun to be a part of. Um, and then I was able to attend this, both the Santiago Orchestra and the Santiago Choir Concerts this past week. Uh, and I'm just so impressed with both those groups. And, um, I'm looking forward, I was glad to get the update on our Prop 28 funds. And I'm looking forward to see how we could further enhance, um, our, uh, music and arts program. So as I mentioned before, if we, in a couple of months, maybe get a, maybe get an update on how those funds are going to be utilized. Um, and then a couple of, of congratulations, uh, again, Auburn Dale for the Golden Bell. Our own Mary Ibarra on her state Board Member of the Year. Just what an honor. It was great to be up at CSBA to honor her. At CSBA, one of the conference, one of the, the breakout sessions I went to was Effective Governance, Governance During Contentious Times. And it was a very interesting panel. That session even got a little bit of contentious, uh, in it. So, but it was great to kind of hear, some of the, the insights from some other school boards. Going back, a couple other, uh, congrats. I want to congratulate Centennial High. I think Sam, Dr. Ben Roscoe and Bill both mentioned, our excellent, uh, sports programs. And Centennial's football team was named the Public High School Football Team of the Year for California. So that was a great honor, even though they didn't, get the CIF championship against some private schools. They were named that, that honor. And then lastly, I want to congratulate, congratulate Santiago's Girls Cross Country Team. The Division One State Champions for Cross Country. And specifically Riley Blade, who was the Division One State Champion for, for the state of California. Girls Cross Country. So hopefully we'll be able to celebrate them here. But, uh, that'll be the second time we're, we're able to honor Riley. She was a two mile champion in track. So congratulations to Santiago and, um, their Girls Cross Country Team and Riley. That's my report.
Thank you. Mrs. Nicola?
I'd like to take the opportunity to highlight some of the things that we're doing as a district that I'm really excited about and wanted to point out. First of all, I wanted to talk about the purchasing team collaboration with CTE and Adult Ed. I want to thank Dahlia and her team. I think it's awesome that, um, that you're working together. I love that. I think it's an amazing opportunity to, um, to bring CTE, um, right to our own facilities. And so just shout out to Dahlia and her team, along with Rob Ibbotson and Dr. Toiby Robletus. I always struggle with her last name. Let's go with Toiby. Anyway, I'm very excited about that collaboration. And also, I'm also very excited about all of the building and construction projects happening across the district. I just want to thank again Dahlia and John Vendruska. Not only are we upgrading our facilities, which is really exciting, but we're putting a lot of people in the community to work. So I think it's just a great win-win. And so I want to thank you for, for those projects and, and getting all of those things started and on the way. Kudos. I want to shout out kudos to our comms team, which seems like a regular occurrence for me up here because they're just always doing amazing things. But I was so impressed with the IB video. I really loved it. Harvard Law student Said Ahmed was amazing. And it's just, it's amazing to be on the school board and it's exciting that we, we have a year on under our belts now, Chris and I do. And I'm still just astounded with things like this that I don't know the full detail of. But wow, after watching that video, the amazing things that our IB students are doing and just that whole program is phenomenal. And I thought the video did a great job of capturing it. So thank you to comms for that. Uh, I also want to say a huge thank you and an amazing job well done to Cassandra Willis and Sandy Verduzco for the Parent Center Family Engagement Week. They just really went all out. I know that, um, with the, the Western Line Dancing Bingo Night, I, I, um, worked with Sandy to get an instructor there for that. I just know how much their heart and their spirit was just so behind that whole week of events. And, and I think we are so blessed in this district to just have such an amazing parent center to really support, um, not just our students, but their families. And, um, I, I really thought they did an amazing job and I enjoyed all of the, the social media coverage so that we can see all of the amazing things that were happening every night of that week at the, uh, through the parent center. The next thing I wanted to mention is Dr. Lisa Simon's team. I want to thank you for, the, the professional development leading the transition to, for all the Title I sites. I really enjoyed reading about that. And I want to shout out to Dr. Sabrina Casper, Antonia Campisano and Christina Rivera for the hard work that went into going into all of the schools to get them transitioned to being Title I sites. And it's a lot of time and a lot of effort. And sometimes I feel like we get stuck on certain things. And, and I, I think that's the kind of thing that we don't let slide. I really, I think it's important to, to point out that it's a lot of work. And, and, um, you know, we're enjoying the funding from being all Title I schools, but it means that there's more work that goes into that as well. And so thank you to you and your team for doing that. And I have a couple more. I, I am so excited, Dr. Tompkins. You just absolutely made my day with your Sources of Strength program that's coming in January. I am so excited about this opportunity to bring in peer, uh, mental wellness support to the district. This is something that I have talked to Dr. Ben Roscoe and Dr. Tompkins about since I've been on the board. My, um, just my passion for wellness in the mental side of things. And I'm just really excited about seeing how that takes off. And I loved reading about it. I appreciate it. And I'm really excited to see how that, how that works out with our kids. I wanted to mention a thank you also to Dahlia and Melissa and the finance team. I know the budget is really challenging and I think it's important to note that, you know, it's, it's a very fine line that we ride between, um, being fiscally conservative, but also being good stewards of the finances that we have in wanting to support our students and our staff and everyone. And it's, I, I, you see other districts that get in trouble with, with really relying heavily one way or the other. And it doesn't work out for them. And, and I think that with a district our size, dealing with a budget our size, you and your team are doing amazing, amazing work. And I'm, I'm very comforted to know that with this declining economy, we're, we're trying not to use the R word. That I know that we're in a really good place and that brings a lot of comfort. It makes me sleep easier at night knowing that we are financially responsible and our staff are, are going to be taken care of and that we don't have to, to worry, at least not yet. So we'll, we'll hope that, that, that doesn't change. I, I wanted to mention on Tuesday, December 5th, I attended a meeting with the City of Norco. We hold these quarterly and they are just really incredibly great meetings. They're very robust conversation. And I want to thank Robin Grunmeyer, Mayor Robin Grunmeyer, for really being committed to those meetings and also being committed to speaking up. And she's going to be, um, transitioning to being on the council and there'll be, Kevin Bash will be the mayor next year. And so I just want to, to thank Robin for all of her work of being a, you know, a teacher in our district and being the mayor. She, she certainly handles a lot. One of the things she mentioned was her concerns about safety with traffic in and around Norco High and Norco Intermediate School, especially right around 3:30, when everyone starts lining up to pick up their kids. And, um, I just felt really good about the conversation. And I know that Dr. Tompkins team is going to be working alongside the City of Norco to see what we can do to make it, make it even safer. One of the things I wanted to mention sadly, it's not what I love to mention, but I feel like I really do. One of the things that I've thought about probably daily since that meeting was that Captain Kohler, um, let us know that there has been an increase in fentanyl cases in Norco specifically. Which of course is just heartbreaking and, but it's a reality that we have to live with and deal with. And so I just think it's important to bring that awareness to all of us. Apparently, I mean, in all of the district, specifically in Norco, there have been more cases. Um, and he talked again at our meeting about the importance of safety and knowing, you know, that just even the, the, the capacity that a few granules of a fentanyl pill can do, you know, can be, can be, you know, can be devastating and, and can take lives. So anyhow, we just need to continue to have heightened awareness there. And I know that Steve Ellis and his team are, you know, on top of it. But anyway, I just wanted to, to share that bit of bad news. But in closing, I just want to reiterate what Mr. Pollak said about the float for the, the, the Christmas parade, the parade of lights in Norco. We were just, we were so, we feel so special to, to pull up, to walk up to our tractor pulled float. That had CNUSD custom cut and made into the scooper of, that's probably not what it is. A scooper of the, of the tractor, um, just beautifully lit. And with so many little intricacies that were just beautiful on the float, all done by Robin Grunmeyer and probably her team. They're in the Ag Department at Norco High. So we just thank you, want to thank you for making us look good. And it was really a great time, even though it was really cold and windy. And on a personal note, it's always very emotional and special to me because my mom founded the parade. And so I know that she's up in heaven looking down and seeing all of the people participating in the parade and watching the parade and seeing her legacy continue. And, uh, so that makes me really proud, too. Thank you.
Thank you. I also want to thank Mayor Grunmeyer, Robin Grunmeyer. I know, I just want to say thank you once again for the amazing float that, that was put together by, by your team and, and the Ag department over at Norco High. I did really enjoy the time on the float and, it was, it was really nice to be a part of. On November 8th, I attended the Parents on Point at Roosevelt High School, which brought awareness to social media, child sex trafficking, fentanyl awareness. I wanted to thank, um, Dr. Anderson for putting that together at Roosevelt. It was really, and his team, it was really, put together for parents in the community to come out and, and get some awareness from some of these hot, hot button issues that are going on in our society right now. And I would love to see that continued throughout, um, our other high schools. I think it's so important that parents are made aware of some of these, these issues. And, and so, um, I did just want to say thank you again to the, the entire team over there at Roosevelt for putting that together. And Alexis Baril for teaching the, um, social media class. Thank you. Very well put together. Um, on the 11th, I did get a chance with, um, Dr. Ben Roscoe to go to the City of Eastville's Veterans Day event. On the 16th, I was able to attend Good Morning Corona for the Corona Chamber of Commerce. The 28th, we had the Eastville City Schools Committee Meeting. And, um, I wanted to thank actually Mayor Rigby for bringing up, uh, what I think is important. Bike, biking awareness around our schools. We've had a couple of instance, instances over the last year where, where students were injured, um, on their bikes. And I think maybe it would be beneficial for the district and possibly the city to partner together and come up with maybe an, an awareness campaign and event for bike, biking awareness. Of course, I'd love to see that in Eastville, but I think it would be beneficial for all of our, all of our schools and all of our cities. Congratulations against, again, Mary for being the Board Member of the Year in the entire state of California. That is an honor and it's an honor to sit on this board with you. I was able to, to, the, the AI, um, general session was really, really good to hear about. It's here and we just have to, uh, um, adapt and, and make sure that it's, that it's not a hindrance to, to us moving forward, but something that we can lean in on and actually help. Because there's, there's opportunities for it to help our teachers in the classroom. There's opportunities outside of just, um, using ChatGPT for nefarious reasons or, or things like that. But there's, there's really good tools that are coming out of, out of AI and it's, and it's here and it's not going anywhere. So we, we're gonna need to embrace it. This weekend, the City of Eastville is having their Christmas event, the Miracle at Riverview. That's going to be on December 16th and 17th from 3:00 PM to 9:00 PM. If you would like to go out and attend, I think they usually have snow and a train and, all kinds of events for the, for the kids. It's usually very well attended and a, and a really good event. And then lastly, I just wanted to make a quick statement. I know there was, there was some words said about me at our last meeting. Specifically calling me unprofessional. And I just wanted to explain my, my no vote for the CSEA contract. I, I made a statement that night and I said, we could have and should have done better. I still stand by that. And I don't mean just CSEA could have done better. I think the district could have done better. We all could have done better for a better contract. We have 140 vacancies, the last I checked, in our par educators. We could have and we should have focused on trying to retain and recruit that specific classification that was asked of and turned down. And I think it could have put us in a much better position, the district and CSEA. And I didn't vote no because I thought that there was too much money on the table. That was not it. I think our, our employees are deservant of, of that. And so I just wanted to clarify that. And wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and enjoy your time off and away. I hope you're able to unplug, enjoy time with your family and recharge for the new year. All right. We will move on to employee association reports. I think Meg is not feeling well today. So Ben, do you have a report for CNTA?
Yes, I do. Good evening, President Rahag and fellow CNUSD board members. Our president, CNTA President Meg is ill tonight. So at her direction, I will address you tonight on behalf of the association. Tonight, business services presented to the board on the first interim financials. The association would like to thank Dahlia for meeting with us on Friday to go over the first interim report and discuss what it meant. Communication is the foundation of trust. We want to recognize the positive steps Dahlia is taking to deepen and grow that trust. The presentation that you received tonight shows that California is facing a deficit next year. The analogy I use to explain the state's current financial situation is like, last year, the governor found a $20 bill on the side of the road and then he included it in his budget. He spent those $20 on all kinds of fluff, one-time things. This year, he only found a $5 bill on the side of the road for extra stuff. So people saying that we are short or in a deficit of like $15, that's technically true. We are thankful that our district is not in the financial difficulties that other districts around us are facing. Despite the scary connotations of the word deficit, it's important to remember the analogy to finding the extra money on the side of the road and finding less of it this year than we found last year. The association applauds the section in Dahlia's PowerPoint titled Committed Funds. If you look at it in your printout, it lays out the committed funds that the Board of Education has on the books. CNTA has worked collaboratively with Reggie Tompkins' department to advocate for increased security fencing and other security measures. Tonight, you are voting on Resolution 58 in Section 18. Tonight, you are voting on Resolution 58 in Section 18AA of the agenda to commit $123.9 million, including the 4.9 million for security fencing to keep our students and members safe. We just want to take the opportunity to remind you, the board has a discretion to allocate and redistribute these committed funds at any time. And this $123.9 million is entirely at your discretion. Thank you for your actions to help keep our students and educators safe. We are thankful that we will still continue to work together to lower class size and keep our commitments in the upcoming years. Thank you all and have a wonderful holiday.
Thank you, Ben. Lorena from CSEA?
Good evening, Board members, Dr. Buen Roaster and Cabinet. CSEA Chapter 369, classified employees are very happy with their increases to salary and medical benefit. They will now be having a cheerful and bright Christmas. We look forward to our continued collaboration with CNUSD. And we just want to wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you for everything.
Thank you. At this point in our agenda, we invite the public to address the board. Please limit remarks to three minutes or less. Comments will be timed. I remind the audience that this is a public session of the board and not a meeting of the public. Although the board will not respond to speakers directly, either during public comment or after the meeting, staff members may contact speakers or follow up with written communication. If multiple speakers address the same subject, I may request that subsequent speakers only add new information. The time limit for a given topic is 20 minutes, regardless of the number of speakers. If a speaker wishes to be heard on more than three topics, the speaker will be allowed up to a total of 10 minutes to address all desired items. Persons who have complaints against employees of the district are encouraged to seek resolution of those complaints by utilizing the district's written complaint procedures rather than orally addressing them at a meeting. Please refrain from applauding after each speaker. Public comment is now open. Our first speaker, Misty Hamlin, first and second.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you guys are all having a good holiday. And we have a couple nights left of Hanukkah, so. All right. The first topic is going to be on what's on the consent item tonight. It's the DEI policy, the diversity, equity and inclusion. So the last time I was here, we kind of asked that we were able to talk and wordsmith. So what you're going to be looking at tonight, we all were in agreement, CAC is on board, with a really big caveat, that when we approached the board to consider tasking the district with an inclusion policy, we were really looking for something that was a little bit more direct. So what you're seeing tonight is great with the understanding that what it is is an overbroad kind of conceptual commitment to inclusion. And, and that goes for all students and then there's some added language that it specifically relates to students with disabilities, which is great. But what it isn't is that systematic policies specifically geared towards inclusive practice as it relates to least restrictive environment for students with disabilities. So we're still hoping to achieve that. And so with that, we would really like to have a policy that is separate in addition to adding the inclusive language to a DEI policy. And we're hoping that, that that is a momentum, a moment to step forward in creating some, some common understanding. And so having that, that systematic practice policy for inclusion, it's a, it's a grounded, it kind of grounds that, that shared understanding. And that's really important because when everybody who comes to the table has a shared understanding of what the expectation is, and that goes for parents, staff, administration, there's a lot of great things that can happen, right? We have less litigation, which is excellent. We also, we're salvaging relationships and we know that that's a huge sensitive topic when it comes to district and parents. So we are supporting this DEI policy as written that you are seeing tonight, but we're still hoping that we can get a separate, a separate policy that the board will task the district to present for adoption. So can I go to now? All right. So for my, my second is I just wanted to bring notice that Section 504, the Rehabilitation Act, is being updated. For a long time, it had specific language, but post-COVID, there was this need to kind of revamp it and say, okay, times are different, we need to update the law. So Section 504, the Rehabilitation Act, is really just an anti-discrimination statute for people with disabilities. And then IDEA takes, by reason of disability, also requiring special education. But they are not mutually exclusive. A student that qualifies as a student with a disability under IDEA still has those 504 protections. So it's really going to behoove us to take a look at what that new language looks like because there is updated language as it relates to service animals. And then specifically what they're calling integration in the federal register. Integration is going to look at inclusion. And it's specifically addressing inclusion with not just post, was it elementary and secondary schools, but preschool, which I reported is a huge issue in our district in meeting those LRE percentages, but also the adult programs. Are we providing our special ed adult programs in the least restrictive environment as well? So I think it would really be good for us to kind of look at this new language and create something that is a separate systematic approach to inclusive practice, not just inclusive, what was I saying, like conceptual commitment. So those, those are my two statements for tonight.
Thank you for your comments. At this time, we are going to move to the consent items. Are there any items that the board would like to pull? Mr. Pollak? Mrs. Zibara? Dr. Ellis? 14D? Anything else? 14D on page five. Starts at the very bottom of four and then goes on to five. Anymore? No? And any highlighted items? No. Mrs. Zibara? Dr. Ellis? No highlights. I'm also pulling 14D. Could I get a motion and a second to approve the other consent items? So moved by Dr. Lala, seconded by Mr. Pollak? We're going to have one, Ms. Nicole is going to, she's stepped out. Okay. Now we are going to go to 14D. This item is our diversity, equity and inclusion in education. That's, that the team has been working on to update over the past several months now. Maybe over six months, I, I would say. I, I first of all, just want to thank everybody who was involved in putting this together. Those members of the CAC who volunteered, Mr. Flores and Ms. Thompson. No, Kelly G. And anybody else that I missed on that team? Dr. Tompkins and CNTA. So thank you all for working together to put together this and, and, and bring it forward to us. I haven't been shy in my opinion that I was looking for an inclusion policy separate from our DEI policy. I still feel that way. I would really just like to see a separate inclusion policy. And actually, I liked the term integration and maybe an inclusion and integration policy. That's what I would like to see. So tonight, I am unfortunately not going to be able to support what we have on, what, what's brought forward to us because it, it's not the intent that I wanted. I really, really wanted to see a separate inclusion policy. I think it was, it's, it's important to put the emphasis on, on our inclusion policies specifically towards our special ed students. Dr. Ellis?
Well, you know, a serious policy like this needs more time. You know, I feel like it's being presented to us in a very hurriedly way. You know, I, I know the committee works, works hard on this, but this is a very serious one. And we might as well be inclusive and really very careful in putting together a policy like this. For example, you know, when you talk about diversity, right? We all understand the category difference, but, but diversity with a big letter D could be, and I'm recommending it gets added, right? Because diversity may also include ways people think, value, believe, as well as ways they interact with various spaces, times and objects based on their specific socially situated identities. Because it's, it's not only those categories of race, religion and all that. Because diverse could be, people think differently. Look what's going on around us in, in this world. The big thing that is happening there, people are thinking differently. Those are diverse, diverse thinkers, diverse set of thinking. And that's not included here. Because if we include diversity of thinking, viewing the world, interacting, I think it will serve us better, not only in teaching kids how to think in a very diverse ways, but also how we hire people. Not the same cultural practice, but maybe some people who are thinking differently, differently than us. Different culture, different ways of, different practices. So diversity, if you create something like this, we gotta broaden it because we don't want to come back and say, you know, I have some additions that I want to make. So I'm really seriously looking at diversity with a big capital D, not just a small D. It takes care of all the categories of difference we, we already know. The other thing that is missing is the whole notion of justice. You know, I, you know, I sent, it's no surprise, I sent you a copy of this, right? The, you know, a relatively conservative group like AXA. You know, and a conservative in a positive way, because these are just activist groups. These are professional, these are superintendents and leaders. And they're talking about social justice as something that fulfill the promise of equity, diversity and inclusion. Because all those will not be fulfilled without that sense of justice. Because justice is different than equity, it's different than, than diversity, it's different from inclusion. Because equity means, how do we, whose interest are we serving? How can we remedy the harm? What, how does the curriculum harm people? So, so it's a different view that, that go beyond diversity, equity and inclusion. So, and it's, and it's in our definition, it's in our policy, current policy statement. There's social justice definition out there, that if you really think about it, it goes, it's very connected, but it goes beyond just diversity, equity and inclusion. And then, as I listen to, to Misty, right, Misty, I still believe that the district, the committee can put together, not a separate one, but an inclusive one, because they already did a good job of categorizing. They have diversity, equity and inclusion. As I've said, I want to include justice because that's what will drive these promises of diversity, equity and inclusion. But, but what Misty and maybe my colleague, Mr. Rahaga is saying is that those specific inclusive practices can be part of the administrative regulations. Right? Because the way it's written now with the, with the committee is really a conceptual inclusion, which is the DEI conceptually. But the implementation, and Dr. Roaster worked, worked on this when we were putting together the equity, is the administrative regulations. Those were, those, that's the area where the specific inclusive practices, the legalities, the, you know, all of those formalities and should fit in. The same thing with, look at our equity. Equity is conceptual. There's no specific equity practices that we're saying. It's, it's in the, it's in the current policy, like motivation, student engagement, they're all there. But we stop because we want it to be conceptual, that will, and the specific will be provided by practitioners, leaders, site administrators. And that will go the same way with the current state of this, of this policy that the committee put together. They have diversity, equity, inclusion. Again, you know, I, maybe justice should be there because we're not the only ones. Because for example, Valverde, when you look at Valverde's website, they have those. Diversity, equity, inclusion and justice. And then they define culturally relevant pedagogy, they talk about critical consciousness, all of those things that really pertain to the notion of justice. And so if we put together a comprehensive one, we need more time to really incorporate the specific inclusive practices that Mrs. Hamlin and Saraga are talking about as part of the administrative regulations. But the, but the subtopics of equity, inclusion, diversity, and hopefully justice, if they approve it, will be part of a more comprehensive DEIJ policy. That's my, that's my, that's my thought. And, and I'm, I'm not just pulling all those ideas from the air. We worked research on this. I have a couple of articles on social justice. I have, we have a book on inclusion. You know, and I don't want to say all of this, but, but that's my positionality that I'm really proud of. And I'm not just pulling all these ideas from the air. These are all research-based and what's going on out there in the field.
Any other discussion on this item?
Yes, I, I appreciate the committee and the time and the effort in getting this policy. I'm in favor of it. I, I think it was a good job. I think where we move forward with, with the public comments and the comments from my colleagues are with the AR. That's where I think we move forward. I like the policy in and of itself. I'm going to vote to approve it, but I think moving forward, we work on the AR.
Ms. Nicole?
I concur with what Bill said, but I, I support it as written and thank the committee for working together as well.
Any other discussion? I'll entertain a motion then.
I make a motion to pass Board Policy 0215, Diversity, Equity and Inclusion in Education.
I second.
We'll continue discussion then?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. And if, if, as, yes, uh, while I really like the spirit where it's at right now, I don't think it's complete. And so I'm gonna, you know, I, I support DEI for sure. You know, but it, it comes short of being it comprehensive. So I'm gonna vote no for this one, this moment.
Any other discussion? Okay, we'll take the vote. All right, item passes three to two. We are moving on now to, actually, I would like to take a brief five-minute, um, recess for the restroom. Any objection to that? All right. All right, we will call the meeting back to order nine forty-two. We will continue on with our agenda with item fourteen H, um, which is a discussion action item nominating a representative to the CSBA Delegate Assembly. Are there any, um, possible nominations?
Yes, I would like to nominate all of them.
You would like to nominate all of the members in subregion eighteen A and eighteen?
Yes, they are currently on our, they're on our, um, they're delegates.
Okay, they're current delegates?
Assembly, yeah.
I will, um, since you are, are CSBA delegate, I will, um, take your opinion on, on nominating them. I, I agree.
Second.
You'll second it?
Yep.
Any discussion? No? All right, that passes five to zero. We'll move on to item fourteen I, which is on page six. It's recommended that the Board of Education appoint one board member to serve as CSBA delegate representing the Coronel Rocker Unified School District Subregion eighteen A for a two-year term beginning April first through March thirty-first. This will be, is, is this, um, is this both you and, and Stacy's? Stacy's, Stacy only?
I, I would like to, um, renominate Stacy.
I'll second that. Your discussion?
I appreciate it, but I'm going to decline. Term will end in April twenty twenty-four, so it's a two-year term, so I'm gonna let somebody else take the opportunity.
Is there anybody else?
I nominate Chris.
Me?
I nominate Chris Rahagi.
I will second that.
Okay, I will, I'll take it. We'll vote. Did you vote? Yeah, I pushed it. Item fourteen J. It is recommended that the Board of Education consider appointing one representative and one alternate to serve on the Riverside County School Board Member Association for twenty twenty-four. Our current, um, board representative is Dr. Lalas with Stacy Nicola as the altern, alternate. Is there anybody that would like to?
I nominate Mary. Now as a delegate to our Riverside County Board.
I second.
Would you like that? Mary? Okay, any other discussion?
Are we doing?
Oh, we, oh, we need an alternate as well. Any, uh, alternate?
I nominate Dr. Lalas.
Alter, well, I guess.
Second that.
Alternate. I don't need to attend, yeah.
So we probably have to change the vote then. Um, Mr. Pollock, you're making the motion to nominate Mary as the representative and Dr. Lalas as this alternate, and I second it. Item fourteen K. It is recommended that the Board of Education appoint a board representative to the Annual County Committee on School District Organization for twenty twenty-four. Um, currently, I serve on that board.
I renominate you. I renominate Chris Rahaga.
I'll accept that.
Second.
All right. Fourteen I. It is recommended that the Board of Education, I'm sorry, one more? All right. Fourteen I. It is recommended that the Board of Education appoint two representatives and an alternate to serve on the district's CAC or Community Advisory Committee. This is just a discussion item. Um, do we have any nominations for this board?
I make a motion to appoint Chris Rahaga and Jose Lalas as the two representatives.
I second that.
Discussion?
Yeah, I just wanna go back to, uh, to the root of what this is about. You, you know, think about policy versus administration. I learned from the very early on of my terms as a school board member attending CSBA in the very, actively in the very beginning. You know, even conferences, that the job of the school board is creating policy, which means we govern through policy and we ask the question, why? What, what makes the policy? We set the goals. We, we review the plans and we evaluate the progress. Administration, and you know this, your goal, you're all administrator. You know, you do the how. Who implements the policy? You plan to achieve the goals and you implement the plan and you, you, you monitor progress. So, so it starts with that. And so I think, I think it's not our job to be part of those, of the advisory committee. Because once you get part of that committee, the conversation turns into administration. Because we're not, they're not policymakers. The policy is the board. We create the policy and whatever policy we have, we, we, we recommend to the, to the committee, like the D-LAC or the CAC or the Wellness Committee, what it is, what policy it is that the school board members are supporting. And then the conversation happen in those committees in terms of the managing, the administration, the planning and so on. So if we become, we become part of those committees, we, we will be part of the, the details of the administrative part. And I, I think it's the job of the cabinet members to be in those committees so that they can monitor what's going on in the district and then report to the, to the, to the board, whether or not the policy is being implemented successfully. So it is, it is, uh, a very, I think structurally flawed. You know, if, if, you know, I'm just speaking like that, it is structurally uh, not, in my view, not an appropriate way to structure the way we do things. And if the issue is in, uh, Brown Act, right? I want to attend D-LAC. I want to attend special ed. I want to attend wellness as an observer. And we can all attend regardless of our numbers. Even five of us can attend as observers. And then know what's going on there and come back and discuss from, from a policy perspective. We're not precluded from attending any of those. And as a board member, we don't departmentalize or we don't specify our, our focus. Oh, my focus is D-LAC. No, no, no. You're also involved in making policies and decisions on wellness and, and special ed. Otherwise, we, we will create silo which is unnecessary because we can, we can go to all of those. And we, we're smart enough to know what the Brown Act means. That means we don't need to discuss, uh, boards, what you call it, jurisdiction or part of the jurisdiction that we have. And so I'm really against this structural formation and I, I, I'm just gonna, you can, you can continue to move on, but I'm just gonna maybe abstain on all of this. And I don't wanna participate because it, it's not my call to be out there in that committee and talk and discuss and, and all, no, it's, I wanna, I wanna be respectful to the members of that committee rather than a board member, you know, doing it. Because, no, we, we can talk about it as policymakers, but in terms of the D-LAC, the specific of CAC, they, they should be discussing that. And if we want to structure it to, to make sure that we know what's happening, the cabinet members should be assigning themselves to, to do it. Because we're policy, we're not administration. Sometimes we mix the two together. We are policymakers. We're not administrators. We're not. We are policy. We govern through policy. And so.
Dr. Lalas, could I ask a, a question real quick? I appreciate your comments deeply and I, I struggle with this as well. One of the things that, that my understanding was, you know, these are areas that we're all passionate about and though we are all, um, intelligent enough, as you say, uh, about the Brown Act, there are still some accidents that, that happen. And so, um, I do think that we, we have to look at that. One of my questions to you, and this was before my time, but you were involved in the think tank for equity as a board member, correct? What was your role in, in that as a board member? And, and how does that differ from these committees?
It's, it's different. It's, it's created because it's an advocacy. We, we need something like the superintendent created it. We said, okay, let's create a think tank. What think tank? Let's talk about achievement gap. Because that's the big issue at the time. And so, okay, well, I'll, I'll participate.
So did you, was that how the, the equity policy was created? Through the think tank? So I'm just, I'm struggling in to, to understand the, the, the difference. I think with two board members being on the, the committee, we're not speaking for the board. We're providing input, um, on something we're passionate about and, and maybe knowledgeable on, um, I don't know, that's just my, my input, but I, I just, I don't understand the difference between you being on the think tank, equity think tank, and, and these, these committees, I guess is my.
I would like to add, um, I, I guess I just see this in a very different way than, than you do, Dr. Lalas, in that, I agree that obviously our function as a board is to be policymakers, but I don't believe that we are to make policy in a vacuum. And I believe that our participation in these committees is to allow us to actually hear from our community citizens about what they would like for us to do in terms of policy. I'd like to think that while we are up here deciding policy, we're not doing that just from our own brains, but we're doing it from input and information we're gathering from our community. Um, and these just happen to be in specific fields so that we're not overwhelmed, uh, with all the policies. So I, I just see it as a very different way. I see it as, as us being, um, being out to, to get some influence from the people who are living it and breathing it in our district so that we can be informed in our policy decisions.
Mrs. Zibara, anything?
I agree and I would like to call for a vote.
I would like to ask, um, do you, I would like to ask if there was any legal, um, if these were run by our legal team and if there was any input or?
Yes, thank you, President Rahaga. Um, these actions were reviewed by legal, um, to ensure that they're in compliance with the board's bylaw ninety-one forty. Ninety-one forty indicates that the board does have jurisdiction to take action for board members to attend uh, meetings developed by the district and/or meetings developed by outside agencies. Should the board attend, should board members attend those meetings? In a board member capacity, um, if there's a desire to express opinions or contribute to the conversation, you would have to clearly indicate that you're speaking as an individual, right, member of the community and not on behalf of the board. So that would be the parameters. Um, but legal did confirm that, um, yes, these actions are, are in compliance with Board Bylaw ninety-one forty. So yes, the recommendation in terms of action taken would be to, um, amend the action from to serve, from, from to serve to attend.
Okay. So I would like to move, um, fourteen I with an amendment instead of serve, attend. So it would say, it is recommended that the Board of Education appoint two representatives and an alternate to attend on the district's Community Advisory Committee. And I will accept Ms. Nicola's nomination for me and Dr. Lalas.
Discussion, discussion, discussion.
That's my, that's my, um, motion.
Discussion, right? Well, you know, I like the change.
Discussion now.
Yeah, so I, I like, I like the change to, to attend, right? But you know, this advisory committee is exempted from the Brown Act. It's on page, uh, uh, page, I think sixteen to seventeen. The advisory committee is exempted from the Brown Act. So, you know, it's, it's not governed by Brown Act. So we just have to be careful to attend, attend, right? As observer. Don't speak. It says, it says in the Brown Act. We attend. And you know, the, the way, um, Ms., uh, Nicola is talking about uh, getting input from the community, yes, we can get input from the community by attending, but not being a formal representative of the board to that committee. Because if you're not going to engage, you're really attending. All five members can attend without assigning ourselves a delegate and alternative because it's just attend and it's not governed by a Brown Act. I'm really sure of that. Page sixteen to seventeen. We're afraid of the Brown Act. It's not.
Do we have, uh, an alternate who would like to serve on the CAC? It's Nicola. So there's a motion and a.
So I, I not, we need a nomination, right? So I nominate Stacy. So I nominate Stacy to be the alternate, or to be the second, wait.
Let's, let's just add that to my, my motion, which would, was, was to amend the statement instead of serve, attend, as me and Dr. Lawless as the nominators and Stacy as the alternate?
Can there be more than three to attend?
No.
Why? It's, it's exempted from the Brown Act. We can attend as observers.
Well, nobody's gonna physically stop you from attending any, any meeting as an observer, but we would like to keep it clean so it doesn't look, doesn't appear like a violation of the Brown Act.
But it's exempted.
A lot of times, I know I, I've attended once or twice, and they ask you questions because they see you as school, as school board members. You, you can't take off your hat and just say, I'm here as a community person. You're a board member, and they ask you questions. So as a board member, you cannot say, oh, yes, you can have ten thousand dollars to have a speaker come. You can't. Because that's not, that's not your job. If you're there just to observe and to listen to them and then bring back what you hear to the superintendent or to Dr. Simon or whoever, that's different. But still, you, you don't need three people. And plus, we're having a hard time just getting the two and an alternate right now.
We have utilized this model, I would call it, with our, our Eastvale and our Norco committees, correct? And so, I, I don't know, there, there, how, how has that worked out? Have there been, you know, issues with that when we have two, two members there? And then generally what happens are those members come back and they report to the, to the board. So I, I don't, I see a precedence already with, with those committees in a, in a similar model.
Exactly, may I agree?
I'm gonna call, call for the vote.
Okay.
That item passes four to one. Moving on to item fourteen M. It is recommended that the Board of Education appoint two representatives and an alternate to serve on the district English Learner Advisory Committee, D-LAC. It's a discussion item.
So first of all, I think we have to move to amend this one as well to say, attend, right, correct? And then I, I nominate Mary Ibarra as one of the, the representatives.
Is there anybody else that would like to be on that committee? I, I'll volunteer for it if there's no other. Mr. Pollak, would you?
Or I'll be alternate.
I'll, I would, okay, so Mr. Pollak is, is, is a member, and I, I can be the alternate?
Either way.
Yeah.
Either, either way.
Okay. So, Mr. Pollak, you're making the motion?
Okay, so I'll make the motion to first amend to say attend instead of serve and then to appoint Ms. Ibarra and myself and with Chris, with Mr. Rahaga as an alternate to the D-LAC committee.
Is there a second? Discussion?
Once we elect this, you're the only ones, we can attend as well, right? For example, if you're elected as the delegate and the alternate, the others who are not elected can come to the meeting? That's my question. Or are you specifically just naming people to attend?
We're assigning people to attend, to be on the committee.
And if you are not?
And to participate in the, in the, in the committees.
And if you are not, you cannot attend. Is that what it is?
If you're not, you should not attend, but if you do attend, you, you would be an observer only.
Okay, good.
The other discussion? Let's vote on it. That item passes four to one. We'll move on to fifteen N. No, I'm sorry, it's still fourteen N. It is recommended that the Board of Education appoint two representatives and an alternate to serve on the district's Wellness Summit Planning Committee. This is a discussion item. Is there any nominations?
I nominate Mr. Pollak and myself and President Rahaga as an alternate to attend the district's Wellness Summit.
Attend instead of serve, and is there a second? Second by Mrs. Ibarra. Discussion? Let's vote. All right. We're moving on to page twenty-nine? The board will meet as the Land Acquisition Corporation following the organizational meeting. Could I get a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting? Let's vote. All right, meeting adjourned. Passes five to zero. We also need to approve the minutes from the meeting of the Crononorko Unified School District Land Acquisition Corporation held on March seventh, twenty twenty-three. Could I get a motion?
I have some corrections for the minutes.
All right.
Item two A, seconded by Bill Pollak, if my last name could be spelled O-C-K instead of A-C-K.
Yes.
And then the same thing on C, O-C-K instead of A-C-K. I'm used to it.
With those amendments, I will second your motion.
So yeah, so I moved that we accept the, the minutes from the meeting on March seventh, two thousand twenty-three with those two corrections.
All in favor? Aye. Five to zero. Item passes. We're now adjourned.